Here.
Mr. Troy.
Mr. Craddy.
Mr. Bitman.
Here.
Mrs. Murray.
Here.
Mrs. Wiley.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
All right, with that, we will move forward by the president. And then we move to number two, the flag of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, we move on to number three, student recognition. I think we have some IESA state qualifiers.
Over to Heinemann first.
All right, good evening. Thank you for having us. My name is Nick Bargiata and along with Katie McChrystal and Jason LaBarre, we are here to recognize our state medalists from the IESA state track and field championships from a few weeks ago down in Peoria. Our staff has had the opportunity to work with these ladies in front of you for the last couple of years and it's been such a pleasure to see their strides and the progress that they have made. We are very proud to announce that we had one individual medalist and one team relay medalist down in Peoria a couple of weeks ago. I'll start with the individual event medalist. That is Myla Wade. Myla Wade, an eighth grader, ran the 400 meter dash. She ran a personal best in a Heinemann school record, running a 59.16 and placing second in state. This girl is a dynamic runner and embraced the challenges that this event brings. We are definitely going to miss her and we are excited to see how she contributes to the high school team in the next couple of years. The other event that we medaled in was our eighth grade four by 100 meter relay team who consisted of Rachel Hogan, Reagan Ellis, Myla Wade, Riley Galanis, and Maya We Met. This is a group that has set goals each meet and held themselves to a very high standard. This paid off down in Peoria as they ran a personal best and another Heinemann school record at a 51.04 seconds and placing fourth in state. The group before you, along with many others from our eighth grade team that will be leaving us, is incredible, will be incredible assets to an already well-rounded high school program. We are proud of you girls, wish you luck, and cannot wait to see what you accomplish in the future. Thank you again, board, for inviting us for tonight.
(laughter)
Hi. Is it like me on this phone?
Hello. Hi. I'm Haley Stavey. I am here to talk about our eighth grade boys, who are currently here, along with our seventh grade boy, who placed at the state tournament in Peoria a few weeks ago, along with our head coach, Jessica Perrin. I have the privilege of working with these boys last few years, and when we were there, they were able to showcase their talents at the highest middle school level. These three boys are a part of our four-by-four team, which placed eighth in state with a time of 3:45. I have a little bit about each of them. We have Mark here. He is someone who is very self-disciplined. He is always setting high standards for himself and doing everything he can to achieve his goals. Anthony is always committed. He is someone who is always looking to improve himself, and doing so not just to better himself, but the whole team. We had another student on our four-by-four team, whose name is Leo. He is someone who I would say is resilient. He was struggling through some injuries throughout the season, but he was able to persevere for the better of the team and helped us with the four-by-four team. Then I have Houston. He is someone who is reliable. He was the fastest guy on our team and had only been a sprinter the last two seasons, but this year he is willing to step up, and he made it, take on this different event to benefit the team, and did so very gracefully. And then we had another person, Daniel. He is someone who is very supportive. He wanted to do what was best for the team and try to best off at that track. And then we had a seventh grade student, Joey. He is someone who I would categorize as motivated. He wanted to do his best every time he stepped on the track, and he placed fifth in state for a mile time of 4:58. We are so proud of these boys and can't wait to see the amazing things they do with us next year, their eighth grade year, or off at the high school. So, yeah, thank you so much for having us.
Congratulations to all of you.
Thank you so much.
Good job. Congratulations to all of you.
Thank you so much.
Can't forget it to do.
Not wind my way.
Thanks for coming, Perrin.
All right, we move on to number four.
The starboard.
Move on to number five, religion and adoption of the agenda. Any changes?
I'm good with it. So I'll make a motion to approve by voice vote that the adopt the agenda as it is written. All right, thank you, Mr. Quagliano. All in favor? All opposed? All right, motion passed. We move on to number six, the curriculum and instruction committee, Mr. Thompson.
Dr. McGrindel, you have a report for us to consider?
I do. So this evening, in the middle, I did provide updates on a variety of different items. I was going to highlight just a few of those. If you have additional questions, you're welcome to ask them at any point. We have been working on our middle school schedule. We've made a, we've had a representative team of teachers, along with district and school administrators, helping to discuss the things that are working and the things that we know we need to improve. We have identified a few minor tweaks that we can make for this next school year, which involves looking at advisory time a little bit differently, as well as our flex periods, renaming what study hall currently is to more accurately reflect what we are actually using it for. But that plan does not address all the needs that we actually have, and so next school year, we will re-convene this team to take a bigger look at the actual minutes in a day. We know we still need to allocate more time to math specifically within our schedule, but we know that that will require some more work. And so we made some minor changes to help implement next year, but we plan to bring back the proposal next school year for some broader level changes, which would impact minutes in a day for this schedule. The intent is that both schools, Marlo and Heinemann, follow the same schedule and that those changes are consistent across the board. But we've been very appreciative of the group of teachers who've been a part of this, as well as the admin, in making this that collaborative process. I also just provided, there are four different mandated units of study that HIB has identified that we must include in our curriculum for next school year. Nothing major. We were active with a couple of things, mainly in the health and in social studies, but we wanted to just review that update, and if you have questions about any of that, you can let us know for sure. But these are things that every year we find out new things we need to include in our curriculum, and as of today, these are the four. I also provided an overview. Ms. Palmer had said that we would provide our focus for our professional learning plan. We did ask staff, through a survey, what their continued unit of focus would be for next school year, as well as our building administrators, our district administrators, and instructional coaches. And we maintained that focus on three areas, that universal tier, and what's interesting is there was a need to look at the rigor. What are we doing to help keep our kids at a higher level? That came through in some of our surveys and feedback. So we were going to shift our focus a little bit on that, but how do we make sure that we're raising the bar so that our students, we know they can do, and write that occasion? So we're going to focus on that for our professional learning communities. Also, that second unit specifically designed instruction, which is differentiation for kids. How do I actually work with students who might need different views in my classroom? And continuing our educational environment of supporting our students with chance and stoic was part two of where we are. We had a lot of great feedback about laying that foundation, but we know we can continue to enhance that, and we know there's a next step there. So nothing major to change, which is nice, because we're going to go into kind of version two of all of that and go a little bit deeper. We do plan to bring to you guys in July a contract for approval with Build Capacity LLC. We've been partnering with them for a couple of years. They used to be Matt Institute of Chicago chief of office, but we want to do some continued work with our admin specifically and also our teachers for empowering their ability to have those leadership conversations at the table with DLCs. So we'll have that contract in July for you, but that will be a part of all this PD plan. I also provided just an update on the SBL screener. We have successfully implemented the first phase of our pilot with that. We have gathered some feedback from our staff, our admin, teachers across the board, and we are finding that the data does give us information that we did not have before, which is positive for us. We were able to specifically drill into areas that are, we can highlight within our district where our students need some more support, and the two that are coming out are self-management, which is basically stress management, planning, organization, things like that. And then the second one is self-awareness, which is identifying emotions and knowing how to react when a problem kind of presents itself. And so the positive thing is we've never had that, be able to identify that that's a need, and so we're looking at our tier-one support with advisory time, what we're doing within our SBL time, to help modify that, to be able to provide more of a support to our students. And about 46% of our students identify K8 that that's a need, which is a significant part, and about 5% that it was even a higher rate than that. And so that's just some initial data. We are still trying to unravel it and figure out how to use it, but I want you to know we have had numerous meetings with our teams, our admin, to kind of dive into that and to make some decisions.
Dr. McGrindel, you also had some parents that did, they had the opportunity to fill out the survey to provide the lens from the home as well?
Absolutely, yes. We have some parents go ahead and take us up on that, and the building teams are using that to look at a student's individual data, to then compare it to what the student's saying, the teacher might be saying, and then the parent. So our plan is to continue the pilot as we have presented back in February, which would be administering it again to our K8, and then bringing in our 912 students next year with that student piece to see how they react to that, and we'll keep you updated throughout that process.
About, about how many parents responded? Percentage?
Yeah, I don't have that. I can get that for you. I'm sorry, I don't have that. Good question, though.
Thank you.
And the 46% of the students, is that the ones that took it?
Yes, correct. Yes, those two took it.
And was that in the pilot for doing K through nine, or nine through 12? I know it wasn't, but how long was the pilot, K through eight?
The pilot was a print for K8 and then evaluating if we wanted to do it, if we thought it was successful with K through eight, trying it with our high schoolers in the fall. So it would be in the fall, trying it with our high school students.
Were you expecting anything other than self-management and self-awareness?
Coming off of this?
Yeah.
I think we didn't know exactly which part of the SBL competencies were the weaker areas, because the other screener that we had didn't identify this at that level. So I would say our teachers know that students do struggle with being able to organize themselves, et cetera, but to be able to actually say that it is, that that is the actual highest need compared to maybe one of the other options is helpful. So I would say it helps us be able to better identify exactly what a student might need versus it just being a general, I felt that way.
So this couldn't be figured out without the screener? Are you saying that?
At this point, this gave us additional data we would not, we have not been able to use to help make decisions at this point.
Dr. McGrindel was rolling it out. Through 912, we would utilize the same format that we did this year, providing the questions. There was very detailed information that was sent home so that parents would understand that, be able to see what the questions were and all of that. We would do that same model moving forward.
Absolutely. With the option to opt out of families, be able to provide their input as well. We did get feedback that parents did. I had a couple of personal emails from people saying, "Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to give our perspective." I know we asked some of our principals and also our facilitators just what they've heard from families, and the biggest, I guess, piece of feedback they provided was they wish there was a better way to receive data, and they don't just mean that the screener may mean all data. It's difficult to come home with papers sometimes and things like that, and so that's a general thing we know we need to wrap our heads around, but that was, that was really the biggest, I guess, question, when they wish they would have gotten it sent home in a different way, just like they would like IAR results and that, you know, all the other things come home. So, but maybe no way to work on it.
I have a question.
Yeah.
And my microphone doesn't work.
Oh.
Oh, Tony. So I saw that in the memo, it said about tying the awareness and self-management to the attendance. So what are some thoughts, I'm sure that it hasn't been completely fleshed out, but what are some of the thoughts about how we tie those behaviors in with the messaging then of trying to increase attendance awareness with students and families as well?
Yeah, absolutely. We know that we're going to have a big push on attendance with our, with our changes to our student handbook coming to you guys, and we'll be able to update that soon. But we will, we know we need to connect that students need to feel once welcome and engaged at school, and then that if they do want to be here, hopefully then they are more connected and they are more self-aware. So our plan would be to continue to, we'll be started, we use Unified Inside, actually just the other day, Ms. Spears and Dr. Hoyu were taking a look at what is the percentage of students who are scoring this, what is their absentee rate, what is their IAR scores, what are all the different things? And it's interesting to see there is a triangulation of data where kids who are now coming to school are scoring lower potentially on some of those. And we also saw some of our higher-performing kids are scoring lower in some of those areas as well, and that's helping us take our step back to think about, even with our gifted programming and our accelerated students, what can we do to help make sure that they have those skills to be successful in those classes as well? So it's giving us a lot more opportunity to have questions than, you know, discuss. What can we do to help support all kids at different levels?
Thank you.
Yeah.
I got one more. So do you feel, have the teachers said that they don't feel the feedback from parents would be as productive or the response that you got without this screener? Like, I mean, as far as self-management, self-awareness, I think I could pick up on that with my kids when they're two. You know what I mean? As far as, but I mean, as far as the conversation happening. Would that have happened? I mean, is this, is this screener, for lack of a better word, like a buffer for teachers to be like, "I noticed this in your kids," or "I noticed this in your student, in your child, I'm seeing this." Would the parents be more like resistant to be like, "Hey, I don't see that," or does this ease that conversation of, "Oh, you're seeing that too?" Or, I don't know.
Yeah, no, we-
I'm just thinking of how this is totally used, because I wasn't really for this, and so I just, I want to ask these questions to answer some of the ones that I've been having.
No, I appreciate that. I think that, that we're really excited to see how parent-teacher conferences go in November, having this data, because this is going to help us be able to have that conversation and engage with them at the table, with, that will have, you know, your child's score plus your academic scores, and then be able to include them more. So I don't have the answer to your question yet, because we haven't asked teachers how they feel on that yet, but I do feel, I do know that they are excited to have something that is not just a teacher saying, "I see your child doing this." It's more, it's database. There's a rumor, there's something kind of connected to it to help back up that evidence, because that's a tough conversation sometimes to have. We hope, you know, families know their children, you know, as well, but then sometimes that doesn't happen. And so I'm hopeful with this, I'm glad we're doing a pilot for a year, so we'll be able to see this with parent-teacher conference, and hope those conversations do occur, put positives so far from the parents.
Yeah. Dr. McGrindel, one of the other components with that is sometimes the environment might look very, very different. Students may not be exhibiting certain things at home that they are at school, because the environment may, if there's some anxiety, is something that might be causing that, whether it is part of the rigor, something that is in, the school setting might be a little bit different at home or vice versa. And so it's always great to get those three pieces. I applaud being able to have some of the parents push out and give some of that, because again, that triangulation of environmental, you know, data also does help to say, "Okay, if we're not seeing it here or here," and maybe it might even be, not seeing it in this section of the school, but maybe it's happening in some of the more unstructured times. It really helps to dive in to give support in those areas.
Just one quick question. On the data, and I'm sure you're not into the data enough yet, or maybe you are, but is there, you mentioned the comments of some of the higher achieving students showing some of this as well. How are you going to differentiate between kind of a good stress of, "I have urgency, I want to get this done, I don't want to fail," that's showing up in this self-management or these other stress indicators, which is actually a positive thing, because you're making them do better things, versus you don't want to turn them all into slackers, if you will?
Right, no, that's a great-
Or just like, "Yeah, whatever happens, happens."
Yeah.
Doesn't necessarily want that either.
No, great point. I think for middle, we're looking at the middle school students, because they're the ones who self-reported this time on filling out a survey. And so what's going to be important is the teacher's perspective on that as well. You don't want to make a change if, you know, Mr. Bitman is someone that is going to perform this way, and it makes them actually perform better, then that might be a healthy amount of, you know, that balance. But then if Dr. McGrindel is crying every night before she comes in or trying to strike out, then that is something that a teacher would be able to know that more, and that's where we would talk to parents, too, because they're going to see that at home. So we don't want to make that rash decision quickly that we're saying we're going to adjust anything for that child, because there is, it's so different by each student, but at least this gives a first pulse of, "This is where we believe you are," and then we can dig a little bit deeper to figure out what that might be.
I think your example is backwards.
Oh, you tried it nicely. Okay, got it. I'll take that. I'll take that. And then the other update I just had in there was regarding some of our college and career readiness. We have so much to be celebrated with what we're doing and the opportunities to provide our students here at our high school. So Dr. Beal and his team do a fantastic job of managing that, and the number of students who are able to receive those college and career pathway endorsements and the growth it's having. We appreciate your support in providing those. We know that those are additional courses and staffing to provide those opportunities for kids, but they're benefiting so positively from that. And so we did include that. With that said, there are money and costs to that. And so the last part of that little, part of the memo, for each of our CPE courses that have certifications, we have been picking up the full cost of all those certifications, utilizing some of our grant funds. The grant funds are not getting bigger. Our number of students going into these courses are getting a lot bigger. The grant funds stay the same for next year, but they've been predicted to go down, but they've maintained it for next year, is what we're being projected to have. And so in order to prepare for that, not next school year, but, sorry, the 25, 26 school year, we are going to start having families pick up half of the cost of that certification test. Currently, families pick up the cost for AP tests, if students are taking it, and they're well aware of it when they sign up. And so we want to make sure we will communicate this, we'll advertise it, we'll do all the different parts. Our goal is not to have anyone have to pay more than what an AP test would cost, so if that does happen, it might be a little less than half for that, we'll pick up more of that. But we just, we know that we have more students wanting to do these programs and offerings, but we can't, you know, continue to fund that without the funds. So we just want to let you guys know that's our plan. Next school year, status quo, we're going to cover it with our grant, but then the following year, we would push fifty percent of that off on families. And it just depends on which class, how much those costs are, and we would make sure we report if they know what they're needing.
Can I just have a quick clarifying question? And this maybe also for AP tests. If someone cannot afford it, do we cover it?
We follow all of our free reuse policies, so yes, it depends on what percent, but we recover half a full based off of what they're needing.
Okay. And then on the CTE side with the, those certifications, is there any chance that local groups that might be able to support that, because they might benefit from what happens out of that right? I saw one of them was auto, right? Maybe there's a consortium of projects around here that would help support that, because this is where they're going to get people out of that school.
We definitely have Mr. Weedock, who's our CTE department chair, for some of that. He's very invested in partnering with our community, so that's a great idea.
Looking at it as a little bit different, similar to like a scholarship opportunity, but for.
Yeah.
A lot of good things.
Are there any other questions or comments from the committee or the board? Six point two, Dr. McCrendle, some news to share about the dual credit intergovernmental agreement.
Yeah, so we have an IGA with McHenry County Cooperative and MCEE, and this is a partnership between us and MCEE in providing the support to our students for some of our courses that we offer. And so we actually prevented this, you guys, I believe it was, it was in October of last school year, and it had not been updated since like the 1960s, 1970s, and then we had to re-update it, and then it was the first time it had been done for a while, and then after they just approved it, they made some minor, minor tweaks to it because they found typos, basically. So they went and updated anything to Board of Controls, MCCEE, the new name for CPEI, it was minor administrative changes, nothing huge. I went ahead and included the track change document in there so you could take a look at it. We feel very comfortable with it, there's no additional profitability on our part, it's the safe spirit of it, but we do need to present it to you guys so that then we can get it approved officially at the next meeting.
Before you go through to six point three, I think you skipped over ACT transition as part of the six point one.
Yeah.
Oh.
Which I think is important.
Oh, you're right. I did. That was on the back, it was on page three. I didn't flip it. Thank you. I can go back to it, six point one, so the ACT transition, yes. The state of Illinois, and I put the date on there just so we can all be aware of how last minute this was, May fourteenth of 2024 announced that we are going to use the ACT assessment starting in, you know, August of 2024. It gave us very limited time, none, to do any of the transition work that we would normally do, and so we have begun with Ms. Kish and Mr. Truax over working through what this might look like. Ms. Spears attended, we were part of CASA, which is a curriculum area director group of larger Chicago. There was a big meeting about this, what that transition might be, and so we have started just making some of the plans. ACT is online, just like SAT, we just did the SAT online for the first time this year. It went off, knocked out of way without any pickup with their team, and all of the, you know, everything works very directly about that, but we do know we're going to have to do some curriculum work this summer to reorganize some units, because unfortunately, there are different things that they're testing, because with math and some in literacy. The big question out there right now is science, because ACT does test some science on there as of now, as of today. We do believe we're still getting the ISA, which is the State Science Assessment. There is question out there to say, "Will they collapse that?" We don't know. But thank you for, I didn't find that, that is a, that is a change, and so something that we're trying to navigate through, and that will reset any types of data that we might have as well, and are going to be set some new cut scores and all the different parts that are involved with that.
In regards to that, are we contemplating bringing in any prep courses? I know we used to do them for the SAT, and then we kind of paused that during COVID, and then it never really came back, but with ACT transitioning, or with us transitioning to ACT, anything that we're going to be doing there, partnering with MCC, anything like that?
Yeah, absolutely. I just actually sent something over to Ms. Kish at the high school that there's a class that they can take to get certified to offer ACT prep courses. We did, we were hoping to offer SAT prep courses this last school year, and the high school was able to get everything organized in time to do it, so we would definitely want to do that, especially because the students have not taken the pre, you know, yeah, the all the different work leading up to it, so it's a different type of assessment. We're also going to need to build in time for them to practice these questions, because even though it's testing the same standards, it is, that's a different way. The test, I mean, as a student, I took both ACT and SAT, and I got two totally different scores when I was a student, and so you just, it reads differently, it had to go to different strengths, and we want to help make sure our students are prepared.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, good question.
Is there, I mean, you have any concept of what kind of commitment the state's making to how many years they're going to stick with ACT?
That's a great question.
I mean.
Until the scores keep going down.
Well, I mean, obviously, with the problem when they went to SAT, because then you lost the continuum of how things were, so you know, you lost multiple years trying to figure out how students were performing, and now I'm, okay, now we're flipping back to this, and what kind of commitment is there?
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember how many.
They had a contract with these?
They did, it was a multi-year contract. I just don't remember it was three or five years. It was one of those two. I just don't remember from the board packet for ISD. I will go look.
They must have been willing to pay more.
Yeah. It was definitely a bit, they all did, and ACT was a little better. Thank you for bringing that up, I'm sorry.
Any other questions or comments? No? The consolidated district plan is item number six point three.
Yeah, so the last one that we have before you is our consolidated district plan. This is, is the mandate that we have to present a plan for how we're utilizing all thirteen federal grants that are a part of that. This year, Mike and Kennedy worked really hard to make some edits to our plan to make it more specific to how we actually are using it. We were writing it more general, but we wanted to be more specific and aligned to our strategic plan goals specifically, and then also making sure that all the terms were accurate and relevant throughout the application. I attached it to the memo, there are no major changes, but we do qualify for Title One, and you can see on the chart on there, we also, which is something for improving basic programs, and those funds really go to support our schools that are designated of having some Title One students in them, which currently is, hold on, Conley, Martin, Cheswick, Marlowe, and the high school. They currently have qualified for some of those funds. Title Two is something else that we do receive from the federal government, that goes to professional learning, and we talked a little over, hopefully use some of those funds for this year. Title Three is for EL students. Title Four goes to our, just student support and academic enrichment, and then we have IDEA, and then ESSER rolloff, so we have extended all ESSER funds, and so it's actually a much smaller amounts of dollars that we're managing from federal government this next school year. But if you have any questions regarding what we've put into our plan, I'm happy to answer them.
Excuse me, the chart that's on this memo, are these grants that we are eligible for or that we intend to apply for?
It's great, both. So we are going to, we are eligible for them, we will receive them, they do it based off of the percentage, the money we get is based off of certain percentages, and so once you approve our consolidated district plan, we will submit this, and then the state will release the dollars.
So the no that's in here is one, that we're just not eligible?
Correct. Yes, we're not eligible. Yep, thank you, sorry.
Now, I think the one that caught my eye was, was the Title Three for immigrant student education. With the influx of students that we've had here from other places and distant lands, that's just, my eye got that, and I was curious why the no would be on something like that.
I think right now we don't have enough students to qualify to receive those funds. If we ever did, we would absolutely come give another big deposit.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I saw that, I guess, I'm trying to think of which one it is, I think it says stakeholder involvement. It's page eight and nine. But on the old version, they listed some of the stakeholders, you know, we had staff surveys, student education, some of the ones I'm not familiar with, so BPAC meeting and Rad Student Council, is that just our normal student council? Five Essential Surveys, I think is the one that we normally push out that's electronic that we are required to fill out.
It is. BPAC is our multilingual family advisory.
So that's now the M-PAC.
MC-MPAC, yes. So you're talking about the older, the one that we're listing before, yes.
Yes, the older version.
So we cleaned, we wanted to make sure that what we actually submit are the groups that are meeting currently, and so that's one of the examples of a cleanup, for sure.
So on the new version, though, it says like Rad Student Council, Teacher of Color Affinity Group, Equity Steering Committee, is that part of, so the student council, Rad Student Council?
They have, they have a Rad, they have a student group who does talk about the Rad, Dr. Beal, the Rad Student Council, yes, and so some students that represent to give some input, and so that's what that group is called currently. And then the Equity Steering Committee is the group of, there's some administrators on it, a couple of teachers who talk about just what our equity plan should be, that's some of that work that we've been revamping this school year and talking through how we're going to prioritize that. And then the third one you listed, I don't remember which is that, I'm sorry.
No, I left out the BPAC.
Okay.
Please, we classified it.
Oh, yeah, so any groups? That was, so ISD put out some guidance to help support teachers of color and being able to have a diverse staff, and so they provided some options, that some dollars to help recruit and help support and retain teachers of color. So they call those affinity groups, that's the name, the name from them, and that's what that group would be, that they give some feedback on how we could better, you know, support and retain our diverse staff. Yeah, no, thank you for asking that.
Anyone else? No? Thanks. Okay, with that, we'll turn it over to Mrs. Wiley for item number seven.
Why, I do just want to mention, we've got the Special Olympics coming up this weekend, and we're very excited. How many students are participating? We've got five athletes.
We have five athletes participating in state, and opening ceremonies are tomorrow evening, and their schedule is straight ahead of schedule.
And then I will turn it over to.
Yeah, we don't have any, any updates to provide to the board earlier than, you know, we're continuing to work on, all the things that, you know, keep updating on. We expect to come, you know, next month with some updates on where we're at on the transition like leases and things we're doing there, so I'll wait till we have our next board meeting to give you the updates, but we're working on all of those things, so nothing official vote. Lots going on.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Fine. Hand it over. My end committee, item eight point one is the payables. We have our purchase orders, accounts payable and disbursements listed. Is there any questions related to those items? Okay. We'll then move that forward to the board for consent at our next meeting. Eight dot two is the monthly fiscal update. Dr. O'Meyer.
Thank you very much. A few quick hitters here and then a few other things we could jump into if needed. First on the list is next, at the next board meeting, we'll be presenting the FY twenty-five tentative draft of the budget for board approval, so that is a board approval line item in accordance with the state code. There are several adjustments coming down the pipeline that we will share, but it will be a material, there will be some material differences certainly from the initial draft we provided. Most of it's good news, so we'll share that at the next board meeting. Number two, as we're approaching year end, we're in June right now, so this is the time for which, while we try to pull up our bootstraps and get ready for year end, so we're starting to begin that process a little bit going into year end, so we'll keep the board apprised on that. We have scheduled the audit for, I do believe, the first week of August, is that sound right, Jenny?
The first week of August, oh, first week of August will be when the auditor comes in. Number three is Renew America Grants, I have that on there. That's approximately 1.1 million, if you remember, that has been provided by the Department of Energy at the national level. We have been, our portion of that state grant is approximately 1.1 million, but for the past, well, six to nine months, we've been waiting for the Department of Energy approval on that grant to go ahead and release the fund so that, well, purchase orders can be placed and, you know, we can start to move forward. As another reminder on that, ninety-five percent, that grant of 1.1 million will cover ninety-five percent of the cost of two electric buses and the related B2G chargers that we're looking to obtain along with that, so that is very beneficial to the district. So just wanted to bring that up, because we're hoping by the end of June, beginning of July, what we've been told is the Department of Energy will pull the trigger on that and ultimately approve that and move forward with that, so that's good news as well. And then lastly, and I have this on the fiscal memo as well, regarding the tender finance opportunity with our overall debt structure, we did meet with PMA and the underwriter just the other day, and we talked about the current opportunity and where that stands with identifying potential bondholders. So they've been able to identify approximately fifty-two percent of the total debt and bondholders holding that period's 2020 debt, and we had, as a group, decided it is beneficial at this time to continue to move forward. And by continuing to move forward, the next step in the process would be to have the board pass and approve a parameters resolution. So we've done that, we've done that with even the new board this past year, so that would be the next step in the process. We'll continue to monitor and review the likelihood of that moving forward. We'll then make a decision as to whether or not we go through a standard and force rating process, and then once we go through that, we will go through the process of tendering and seeing if we could repurchase our bonds so that we could refinance our bonds, hopefully bringing the board or the district anywhere from maybe a half million dollars to a million dollars in debt service savings over the next several years, so. Good news on that front, looks like it is going well, but we still have to do a few more things to feel better about that, so. Other than that, that is all I have on my fiscal update. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I'm really curious about this, and it may not have been shared. When it comes to these, the repurchasing of these bonds, did they share with you a little listing of who owns these bonds? Are they large entities or are they individuals as well?
They did. No, they're, they're all banks and finance institutions.
Yeah, okay.
But most of the holders of that fifty-two percent that were identified ranged anywhere from 3.5 million to one to two million, right? So it's not like we have one big insurance company that purchased 20 million dollars of the bonds. At least, we don't know that yet, right? Of the fifty-two percent that they identified, the majority of those holders are floating So it's not like we have one big insurance company that purchased $20 million of the bonds. At least, we don't know that yet, right? Of the 52% that they identified, the majority of those holders are floating around the 1 to 2 and 1/2 million dollar range. Primarily financial institutions.
There was actually a school district that owned a couple of bonds, which I thought was a little odd.
I've always said we should be buying our own bonds.
Correct.
Yes. No, thank you.
They were a good risk.
I, yeah, exactly.
We pay what we pay.
Only piece of the rock.
Right, exactly. So, yeah, that, that, you know, the one thing they talked about is, you know, the 50, 52% they identified. Ultimately, we, we go forward further and further with this. The way they push this out on a national municipal bond site, ultimately, other holders may see this down the line. So we're not just, our universe won't be just limited to this 52%. It'll, it'll go out to the whole universe. You might capture maybe some more and there's no, there's no guarantee that 50, in the 52%, you're going to get a lot of action. But I think we're hoping that ultimately we can maybe get in that, like, 20 to 30% range of possibly accessing. That, that I think is where it would most likely help us out.
Any other questions related to those updates that Mr. Oltmeyer gave? If not, we also have our activity funds in the agenda. Is there any questions related to the activity funds? If they're not, we'll go to eight dot three, which is the revenue and expenditure reports.
Thank you very much. In front of you, you have the April 2024 Financial Executive Summary. If you look at the operating deficit of a little over a million dollars, we continue to trend other than with health insurance and we'll talk about that in a second. Within budget, primarily driven, that deficit is primarily driven by the lack of federal revenues received. We're still waiting on approximately a million dollars to come through on the federal revenue side. But we're also showing a deficit at this point in time because capital expenditures are at 99% of budget, which they generally are at this time of year for that line item. So, timing difference on the operating deficit. I'll get to health insurance in a minute. As we approach year, year end, you know, it's very common for us to sit with all, while we sit with all the departments typically on a quarterly basis and we understand what is going on within transportation and O and M and curriculum and technology and all the major, major departments. And so I just do want to highlight as we're, we're, are approaching year end, within transportation, for instance, you know, if they are within budget, we are seeing some favorability on the drivers line, probably because, well, we're in need of drivers. We did budget contract transportation at about $500,000 and, and we are trending towards that number. So that's good news. We're not over on that line item and I don't think we will be. Gasoline and diesel, we're running favorable, so that's also good news. So, transportation is looking pretty good. On the operations and maintenance side, Mr. Rinkosik noted this previously, snow removal. We had a really mild winter and we're looking, we're only at 58% of a $350,000 budget on that line item. So looking favorable there. Electric and natural gas are trending at 10% favorability, maybe a little over 10% on both of those line items. Those line items are $1.1 million combined, $800,000 and $300,000 respectively. And most other line items were trending towards, you know, meeting, meeting the budget. So looking pretty good there. On the technology side, this is the time of year that Mr. Remus and his team are really starting to gear up and, and purchase a lot of Chromebooks, get ready for next year. So, technology is tracking within budget and if you were to look at their budget today, you'd be like, wow, it's really favorable. Well, that's April. But in May and June, when they start to purchase all those Chromebooks and get them ready for next year is when they utilize that big portion of their budget. So they're doing that last month and this month, but are trending to track within budget. So overall, looking pretty good. There's some favorability on the curriculum side as well. So wanted to note, note you as well, Dr. McRindell. So, looking pretty good. Then we talked about health insurance and we continue the trend at about 1 million to 1.1 million dollars of settlements and claims on a monthly basis. So unfortunately, here we are at the end of April, we have two months left and it looks like we are going to end up at about 13.7 or 13.8 million dollars in total coins, which is approximately 1.5 to 1.6 million dollars over budget on that line item. So, if you do recall, we did knock that budget down by a million dollars at year end. So part of the reason why we are sitting with a district 1.6 million dollar, 1.7 million dollar operating surplus overall for the district, that was part of the reason. So, we kind of were somewhat expecting this. The actuaries had predicted this, so we are starting to see, you know, what is coming through. We can only hope that a lot of these large claimants will get better and/or kind of fall off being a large claimant. So, which is, well, getting better. So, we'll continue to monitor that, but wanted to update the board on that. If you were to look at the dashboard, things we've talked about in the past, certainly from a revenue standpoint, there are a lot of timing differences. I do want to note CP-PRT. And if you look at CP-PRT versus prior year, 541,000 to a little over a million in prior year. That does not include, in early May, we did receive the April CP-PRT payment. So we are close to the $800,000 now on CP-PRT and trending a little closer towards that FY '24 budget of 1.1 million dollars. So, we are expecting one more payment and that is generally a large payment from the state for CP-PRT. So we're hoping to hit budget on that line item. Other than that, a lot of timing differences here and there. We have talked about Medicaid. We're still waiting to hear from HFS as to how we are going to settle that cost settlement and what the rest of the year will look like on that line item. So stay tuned on that. But if you do look at the key operating expenditures, you can see we're pretty much trending in line on all line items with the exception of health insurance. So, that is your April Financial Executive Summary. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Tried to provide you a little more information.
Do you, do you think the Medicaid is going to hit this year, the hit that we had, or next year?
Well, I, I'm thinking, I'm thinking part of the reason they were withholding making payments down at HFS was that at the state level, they recouped over eight, nine million dollars from school districts, right? And part of that recouping process was, I think, withholding monies that they're going to send to us. So, I'm not sure if we're going to start receiving the funds for which we have built and we are eligible to receive or if they are going to hold back the remittance of those bills because, well, they're saying we owe them $374,000. Yeah, so we're still waiting for guidance from HFS on that. Thank you. I'm preferring that it's this year. So we can move on.
So, I mean, just looking at both sides of revenue and expenditures, big picture.
The way I'm looking at this right now, I get one really bad bogey on the health insurance, which at the end of the day is probably going to be one and a half million to the bad is where I think that's going to be. But offsetting that right now is the impact transition fees and the interest income are in the positive. So I'm, I'm looking from a big picture, a couple of things off a bit, but probably still be in the vicinity at the end of the day.
Correct. I, I do think the favorability that we have talked about earlier, combined with the revenue favorability, which we've talked about in the past several months, on impact fees and interest earnings, clearly. And I talked about earlier in the fiscal memo when we present the FY '25 budget, some of the revenue adjustments. So some of those revenue adjustments will be on the interest earnings line because the economy and the investment rates are still, we can still get a pretty good CD and, you know, one year out at, at over 5%. And so we're, we're lathering and investing appropriately in next year's forecast based on our average cash balances is looking pretty good. But we're going to see an interest earnings adjustment, revenue budget line item adjustment, as well as impact fees and transition fees. I might as well tell you that now. Transition fees, historically, we have not received transition fees for several years because the majority of the impact fees we receive are from Huntley. Huntley, and Huntley is not collecting transition fees anymore. Transition fees, just for, for, for all of the boards, are revenues that actually we're allowed to put in our general fund. And we put those in the 10 fund. And so that's an operating revenue. The, the impact fees you see here on this dashboard, okay, all of those currently are sitting in Fund 60. And that doesn't necessarily impact the operating revenues of the district because Fund 60 is our capital project fund and just like our bond and interest fund, that's not considered operating. So it's kind of an important distinction. So even though, right, so knowing that we have a million plus coming in for impact fees, they're all sitting in the capital project fund, that will enable us in the future, right? Because we use that, those dollars, we used to use those dollars to pay off our Marlowe addition debt, which is going to expire. And if we continue to receive these impact fee revenues going into the capital projects fund, we could use it for two purposes primarily. We use it for capital projects and/or we use it for future debt abatement as well. So that's an opportunity coming down the pipeline. Transition fees, a small portion of transition fees will be budgeted in the 10 fund. And I say that because, well, we now have Algonquin new construction, right? So a large portion, right now, five, $600,000 of the 1.2 million you see in impact fees are from the Algonquin property, property across the street and a property across from Boulder Ridge on Algonquin Road. And Algonquin is still collecting transition fees. And so when we receive those, we put those into Fund 10. We do expect to have some of that happen next year. So that will also be a revenue positive adjustment to the operating budget. That makes sense? So, a little more than, but at least I explained it here rather than two weeks from now.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, any further questions on revenue and expenses, anybody wants? Okay. The next item is a revenue contract and there's quite a few in here.
Quite a few because we try to get, everybody get them in before the beginning of next school year.
Yeah.
So that they're approved, as well as, so they need to be.
Right, usually there's only, you know, one, two, three of them in here. So I just want everybody to maybe take a quick look, make sure they didn't have any questions related to it because they range all the way from the football team, $75,000, one down a little bit, $1,200. Anybody have any questions or, or any issues with any of those fundraisers that have been presented?
I was actually thinking there was going to be more when I looked at the list because, but they must do different types of fundraising.
During the year, correct, yeah. And, and a lot of times their fundraising doesn't necessarily use an outside vendor generating over $1,000, which would have to be a problem for the board. It's a revenue contract.
All right. So my finance committee is two. Okay, we will push that forward for consent at the next meeting. Okay, eight five is signatory for bank accounts, Mr. Oltmeyer. And we have our, yourself, Lombard.
Yeah, this is a standard operating procedure on an annual basis as well as the next few.
Questions really to that? Nope, that will go forward to the board, consent. Eight point six, again, another one designated depositories. Any of any concerns about any of the five, six, six banks listed?
Pretty straightforward.
Yep. Okay, that, that will go forward to the board. Eight seven is notice of appointment of treasurer, treasurer's bond, again, another standard annual item. Questions related to that? That will push that forward for consent and finance is done. Onto the HR.
All right, Mr. Credit's not here, so I just, I will hand it over to Dr. Zarek, who's on the calendar. Any updates there?
Yeah, in front of you tonight is a recommendation for the '25, '26 school calendar. So Committee of Administrators, HTA, and as the representation, came together to discuss the calendar for '25, '26. And what you have in front of you is that recommendation. So just some highlights, it is essentially mirroring the two years previous other than this calendar does not involve a leap year or an election year. So, which helps us out a little bit in terms of getting out a little bit earlier. But we're looking at an August 13th start date and then a May 21st end date. Start and end date allows us to balance the high school semesters pretty good this time around. Sometimes those are pretty significant on, you know, both ends. But with this calendar, they ended up being as close as we've been in a few years. Also, some other highlights in there that you're going to see, parent teacher conferences, as we've had them the past, we're probably going on eight, nine years now, maybe even 10, that we've had parent teacher conferences there. November, our spring break that we align with other McHenry County school districts. And then we have our early release days and institute days sprinkled throughout the year. We are going to continue to have the two institute days to start the year on that Monday and Tuesday of the first week. I would say those are the major highlights.
Lombard?
Institute Day number four.
Institute Day number four.
This, we're looking at, bringing it back to April, rather than earlier in the year to be able to look at some of those things of as moving ahead, some of those planning, some prep work for professional development that people start to be thinking about prior to heading into the summer and having some of those. So that was done in the past. We did move that up the last few years, but they've done some feedback, wanting to move back to that April for that fourth institute day. Really interesting, in a unit district, there are obviously going to be things that are better first half of the year for some levels and others for, you know, the high school might not look at that one where we may have some curricular changes more readily happening at the elementary these next couple of years where the high school had not necessarily, and so some of that prep ahead of time, it alters from year to year. And so, one of the things we try to do is to balance what's best for all of our students. So there's going to be certain things that might be better for high school students because of when a semester ends or when that parent teacher conference may have to happen. So those meetings are always interesting and different perspectives coming in. So just really trying to balance out what works best for our students and the needs that might be coming up with curriculum changes or professional development down the next couple of years.
Yeah, I want to thank Ms. Bachmann. She actually ran this committee this year, I was unfortunately asked for that. Albeit, it's my favorite committee, I may just turn that over to her in the future. And this was put together, the forums you're seeing here for the public to see. And when you're living in '23, '24, trying to do '25, '26, it's, we go through a few drafts. So appreciate her help with that and a lot of eyes, you know, before it comes out. Hopefully there aren't any errors with dates.
So I didn't look close as I probably should have at this one. There was some discussion in the past about snow days and building it in. Is there anything around that? Can we build in a snow day or?
Yeah, we didn't build anything in, they're, they're still on the end.
What we do is have the five emergency days that are built in automatically. Something as we move into, something that wouldn't impact here with what the calendar would look like. And we've seen that some districts will say if there's an emergency day that's utilized, so it's a snow day, that maybe there's a non-student attendance day that was going to be a non-student attendance day. Let me, again, hypothetically, this is what I'm doing, right? They, they may say that February date that we have is off would be utilized as an emergency day. That's anything that we're going to be looking at recommending. But bringing it forward as we look at next year with some of our prioritizations and things like that to say that it would be looking at if some, if an event, a weather event happens around this, the first one or two would be called this. After that, it would be called maybe E-Learning or something. So please watch for that with some of the superintendent reports coming up prior to the beginning of the school year. So that wouldn't affect the calendar, it would just be how we would call certain days.
Yeah, it would have to be a, a large communication just to let folks know if this, then we would be in session on those days. But we have a.
No, 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 that's what I'm saying. Some districts do it like that. That's not something we'd be recommending. It would be, I believe, would stop some of our surrounding areas utilize what I was referring to in the second where they may say the first X number of weather days are a snow day. After that, it would be E-Learning or something like that. So again, wanting to flush that out. I know that, that's definitely things that are present to you as, as we look at the beginning of the school year, just looking back and, and looking forward at that. It helps to be able to give some continuity consistency. I know that there will be always dialogue around that depending on, do we have a buffer day, as people call it, before you go over into Memorial Day or things like that. But I think we just have to make decisions that are best for our students and our, our staff on those. And so having some type of a protocol definitely will help with that communication.
Thank you.
All right, any, we did not move that forward, Mr. Thompson?
None that I could see.
All right, move that forward. Other questions? Unless there's anything else, Dr. Zarek?
That's it.
All right.
Thank you. Item 10, Mr. Rinkosik, you are up. Good evening. Ten dot one, O and M updates, anything to highlight on this sheet today?
Yes, first item on the list there, you did.
First item on the list there, you did deliver completion of the bus lot project two days ago. We finally got all the proper paperwork to make sure the money is properly distributed so that's closed out.
Can you speak a little bit closer to the right, please?
The bus lot paving project, which is like item one A in my report, that is actually completed now. We got all the proper documentation two days ago. We could have first of the nickel as payment distribution. DX schooling project for last summer that we're doing, getting really, really close to have another proper documentation for closing that. I'm getting very sorry. Community solar, we had a discussion today to get an update on that still in progress. They're talking about maybe ending with the president logistics with ComEd and these million dollars and things right now. Time tuning, it might be like September start or something for work up there. We won't really know as much on the school property per se because if it aren't in that parcel, if it aren't reworked, that instead we'll start to see, at some point, we'll start to see payments for leases and things. Which will be coming. Our summer projects are starting out, most of them very well. Carpeting, it's going very, very well. Kudos to our custodial contractor who I typically lean on to remove all furniture on the way to we get it and start making it. The contractor who has a lot of work, it's hard when they actually compliment us today and say that they're doing very well. And what it's gone is it's given the contractor that's doing floor replacements, the ability to end up becoming, bringing more people in with that project. I think we're going to deliver early. Going very, very well, per se. The roofing project, unfortunately, we've had many discussions with the roper and his intention is not start his work at the Humpy High School until June 24th. We're suggesting that's putting a pretty tight burn on it so that it not rain at all in July. But we've been down this road before. All the people starting a little late. We'll get our, we've got some lumber and some work to protect this, this part that they're not doing. We're expecting delivery around August 4th. We had a little disaster, not disaster, but a little equipment failure that just gave us a scramble. The kitchen in the, all commercial kitchens in the school district have a large exhaust fan over all the equipment. And when you take that in my chair out of the building that quickly, you have to call makeup air or reintroduce air. You're going to take it out of places in the building, house of the weekends or the exterior doors and they can temper that air through this makeup area. Well, the one at the high school kitchen failed and it failed significantly. It's the reported insurance company that's a consideration that was discovered a couple of weeks ago on our second shipment, this guy doing his rounds and PMs. We do have a regular outsourced PM on it too, and all indications were it was fine. So it's kind of a surprise, but all in, it is 28 years old. So we're exploring cost for replacement, which we may be looking at in the very, very near future, I hope. We've got people that run around and get prices together already. Mark, I think talked mostly about the Renew America. I've been doing a lot of work in the background, talking to people that are doing vehicle grid, tireless, many factors of the products, the chargers and software and on networks, the people doing electric, we've managed to try to get an understanding of the best model we might want to have. I think we're honing in. We issued a request or proposal on some of the components of the trucks and software. And I know Mark is with the transportation, got something in there for the buses. So we're getting close to have a combination during the full trailer, should we get the release funds. Mark talked a little bit about budget, electric billing, just some stresses on the electric, electricity budget. We have still not received a bill for the Square Fine Road since January. I looked at the months missing because where we're tracking right now, that is up to about $42,000, that's about 5% of our budget. I also want you to know that the facility distribution charge that's been missing out for a couple of months. I just did a 12-month look historically for the calendar year '23 to see that the impact that that charge is, it's 25% of our electricity license, it's a little over 25%. I haven't got a straight answer on that yet, as to if that's a charge that also is not going to be there anymore or is it a mistake in not getting it on the new, problematic level? And so I don't have much more to add on that. A lot of other little projects going on, but all in all, that's a decent amount. Any answering questions?
All right. Any questions from the committee or from the board? All right. Nothing to move forward, so I'll turn it over to Mr. Bittman for legislative.
Thanks, Troy. On the legislative side, the first one, this was obviously a big month for our friends down in Freefield. And I wanted to highlight a couple of things. The first is the budget. They did add $350 million to EVA funding, which I understand it is pretty much the minimum to keep track for this. They are not catching up to the funding, so they did not meeting the requirement that they were trying to do in 2017, and they increased everybody's income tax by 60%. So they're not using that money for actually funding education like they promised. Instead, they are using it for human services, which is a billion dollars. Opinion there, adding that. There were two bills I wanted to highlight that also came through. One is Senate Bill 1400. So what this bill does is it updates the school code that Senate Bill 100 created. Most of this seems to be based around asking ISPE to come up with a recommendation and guidance on how to handle the discipline issue because everybody's been doing it differently. And our P-Tech spent the entire year kind of going through to try to streamline how we handle things. Imagine how that has crossed the state. The other piece to it is it looks for whenever we do an intervention, it needs to be evidence-based approach, which sounds good, but you never really have to understand how that works. I would worry a little bit that it might take out some of the creativity in how you might intervene as well and be a little bit too constraining on that. So I think there's something here that we're going to need to watch and how that, I guess my question, I don't want to put you on the spot, Ms. Lombard, is does the district have the ability to influence anyway how ISPE comes out with their guidelines? Because even the work that we've done on P-Tech and all the things you guys have done in the last year, last few years, feels like you might want to help.
Well, I believe when, when they're looking at creating various guides, areas, they just did that with the literacy plan. And so going through that, there were multiple literacy walks and listens and tours as they went around the state. There were some virtual components. They did that multiple times for that. So usually when it's looking at a bigger scale item that will impact so many, they do look to collect voice around that. So we'll definitely be watching to see. I would, can't say that that's exactly what they're going to do here, but there's a variety of committees when they're looking at funding and legislation and all of those. And we have a variety of our administrators who are on some of those committees. And so if it's not a listening tour, it may be through some of these other aspects and after what we can share some of the work that we.
I think we've done a lot of good work in this and it would be nice, I would, I guess I get nervous about what they might post.
Yeah. And I don't want to speak for everyone. We'll be talking about the matrix here and just a smidge that will be added to the handbook that a number of our staff have been very, very diligently working on all school year, looking at definitions and all of those things. A lot of those responses, there's the consequence side and the consequence side and then that intervention side. And it needs to have kind of that blend of the two as we look forward because certain things do, you know, need a consequence and others do have that other piece of how do we educate and change behavior? So a lot of the things that are in here are evidence-based. It just might be, it's a little bit different than reading our math type intervention. And so I do think there's a lot of things that are already in there. There may be some other additional things that we learned from another district or whatnot.
Absolutely. Thank you for that. The last item that I want to highlight on legislation, it doesn't totally affect our business, our district as it is right now. And it's House Bill 4582. It's, I believe, on the governor's desk. I don't think he designed for it. So what my understanding of this bill is, is that it allows districts, whole districts to go ahead with large capital projects that used to require a referendum and not require a referendum anymore and go ahead with a simple board vote if they include something like early childhood classrooms in the building. So I guess I'm suggesting as a new business item for maybe next month around, for the board to consider, maybe we want to put some self-governance in our heart. And if this passes or if the governor signs it, maybe we put a higher restriction than a simple board vote or three votes to go after a $50 million, $100 million, a billion dollar cycle park referendum because there's a early childhood classroom in there. And it just feels like if the state's going to give us the responsibility to make that decision, maybe we need to put that at a higher bar in our policy, just as the FAWC has a new business item.
Yeah, no. Yeah, I would agree. I'd want to see what they're putting in there, but you don't want districts going out and bypassing voter approval on significant commitments.
And then I just think, I would prefer the referendum because then you know you have community support for when you do things like this. So we could write it that way. And again, I think if they're going to give us power, we can think about it.
Right. We have a dollar threshold in purpose.
I don't know if there's any other discussion about that, but I can bring that up as new business or.
There's a future meeting.
Yeah. All right. With that, what's any other legislation updates from the committee?
Not so much an update. It's more of a question. So the couple of things that you just brought up, you're talking about how do we influence this thing? And I think the question is actually, should be changed. How do we influence legislators? Because we as a board, and Mark's done a very good job of this when it comes to the financial stuff, but by and large as a board, we really don't keep in touch with legislators at all. And correct me if I'm wrong in that perception, but that's something where some school districts is part of their culture and their DNA, staying in touch with, closer in touch with their legislators. I'm not sure that we have done a great job of doing that.
So I think it depends on what the bill is, what is being looked at with those. I know we work with our various organizations. There were a number of potential bills that were out there, dual credit was out there. One that was involving input on or centered around a certain mandated that all districts, all buildings do around a minimum 45 minutes uninterrupted planning period time and how that would impact. And so through LUDA, I know we stayed, we had weekly updates on those. There were actual, with both of those forms that we were asked to fill out to make sure from a district's perspective, we were giving our input on those bills. And so I think with working through LUDA, that's really, really helped to stay on top of what those are and what that impacts. When I look at the component of the planning period where it would not have maybe necessarily impacted our district when we think about the way our secondary schedules are done as well as at the elementary level, it's at the 30, 2, 30-minute planning period. So it's over that 45-minute component. It would not have impacted us per se right now, potentially down the road later, but what would that do as, do it from the educational realm? And then with our Kishwaki Superintendent Region Group, twice a year that one of those meetings is around where the legislators are coming in, telling us some of the things that are going on. I don't know that that has always been the case, but again, what are they hearing from us, our concerns, so that they can take a look back when they're going into session and things like that. And so there's absolutely some probably really good opportunities that we could continue to grow that, to stay ahead of those pieces, maybe even before that bill gets, you know, to the, all right, now we're at the House or.
Right. And that's kind of where I'm going with this.
Sure.
I know from the school business officials organization, there is advocacy that happens there where the business officials get an email and say, yep, go ahead and send a submission slip to the legislature, whether it's for or against that organ, where that positioning happens for the organization. But the same thing can be done from school board member's side to do the same thing and to send those kinds of electronic correspondence to say, yes, it's supported or not supported without actually being in person to submit a testimony. So it's those types of things, maybe we, we can't do the in-person as much because of people's times and schedules of legislators, but if there's other ways to provide that avenue of advocacy, this is some, one of those ways.
They may be receiving it from Mr. Altmeier through business, mileage from the superintendent list, but then maybe then some of these two, hey, as boards, could we push out some of those fitness lifts or whatnot to be able to do the same.
Exactly.
That's a great point.
And then also the Kishwaki Division for the School Board Association, sorry, I'm going to start mixing my acronyms real quickly, met this week. And one of the things that we're looking at as a possible programming idea for one of the, either the spring or the fall session, I'm not sure which one's going to work out timing wise, is actually to invite some legislators from the different Kishwaki school districts. And it might require some personal invitations where there's a request to not only have school board or have school board members to do that invitation in addition to a written invitation from the School Board Association. It's not been finalized, that's very preliminary at this point, but it's on the table as far as the programming idea.
Good sir. Some good points, Mr. Troy. I think ISPE has actually said they're looking for more school board members to be ambassadors on certain legislations.
Yeah. And I've seen the list that we get from the School Business Officials Organization that they chart, I can't even tell you how many are on that spreadsheet, but there are easily hundreds of different bills that are proposed. Not all of them see the light of day necessarily, but some do come through and that's when the advocacy begins on issuing those position voices.
Just again, for future, we should, I mean, we, many, many years ago, had very strong ties to our local legislatures. We talked to them all the time, had a great line of communication with them. It, you know, the legislative map changed quite a bit. Things have jumbled up quite a bit. You may, Mark, you may be talking about these people. I'm embarrassed to say, I don't even know that I know who our state rep is and the, I think there's the mayor and the, yeah, and the state senator, where I used to talk to these people once a month. So I'm not even that well-connected.
No, it was being in the school year or being new in the role, but we did have connections at the beginning of the school year and then again. So then at some of these meetings, whether it was through Kishwaki region or other types of LUDA, whatnot, there's that name and that base and that connection. And I know that few reach out more regularly than others, but maybe at the beginning of the year, we can just send that to you guys as well.
I literally did committee, we individually should probably try to develop a little bit of that connection.
I can do that, yep.
Because I've lost.
I'll get to the names and contact.
All connection with these people.
Yeah, maybe send it out to the committee.
I will, yep, just to the committee.
And that's what was, what was striking for me in listening to some of the other board members on the executive board for the Kishwaki Division is that they said, yes, it's part of our board's DNA so that when board members change over, that culture of contact remains part of the fabric and texture of the board. So even though people change, the organization still is in contact with those legislators, even if they turn over or when they turn over as well.
Like that a practice every year, even if the committee hasn't changed?
Correct.
We'll go ahead and just refresh of who everybody is.
Absolutely. And that way we stay on their radar and we know who our legislators are a little bit better than just a name on a ballot.
Good discussion. So we'll move to policy update.
Sure. Policy update, but it falls under policy and we put it under curriculum and it actually makes more sense for it to go under policy because much of this is tied to policy. So looking at recommendations for additions or changes or modifications to the handbook. Put the format together just a little bit different. Instead of putting all the track changes for all four of our handbooks, putting together what the recommended changes are. And after discussion here, if there's long tweaks or modifications or everybody is good with the changes, we will work with Mrs. Woods who then makes it beautiful and puts them all in with all the track changes. And we would bring it back at the regular board meeting. And I actually will put it as an action item rather than just an consent so that they're timed to meritate on some of the changes here and recommendations. But as you know, by state law, we are required to have a review of various components. And in the past, those discipline and whatnot was done at the building level with our P-Tech this year, meeting four times a year. We have some really robust conversations around a variety of the policies. And the two main areas, there were a lot of discussions, but the two. And the two main areas, there were a lot of discussions, but the two main areas that took much of the dialogue, discussion, any feedback were around our attendance and just behavior management. And as you know, in August of last year, we put together a presentation just rolling out, some of the resetting, what would the procedural things look like in the building, all around CHAMP's and behavior management, talking about that connect. That is going to still continue on, but kind of the next phases of those pieces will roll out. What does that look like in the classroom and all of that? This August, we will go ahead and do a presentation in the beginning of the school year around a lot of the changes and the consistent messaging and the practices around attendance. And what is that connect? I can't recall the way I brought it up, but as we look at that behavior attendance, that absolutely does impact our students' achievement, not only for that student, but could be larger for the classroom as well. And so looking at those pieces. So many of the recommendations that came from the PTAC were more procedural in nature, if you will, about looking at, as policies were reviewed, much of the policy made sense. It was, how do we make sure that we are doing these things consistently? That students are aware of them, staff are aware of them, students are aware of them. And sometimes information, I think we had a couple of different meetings where, whether it was with attendance or it was with behavior discipline, that was, oh, you guys do that. And so how do we do better at making sure families in the community are aware of what's going on in our building? And what maybe data needs to be pushed out at kind of regular basis? We look at it all the time in our schools and in our districts, but at that high level, might be for families. What do we need to push out there, whether it be on a dashboard or more regularly in some of our meetings here? To see what are those trends? What are we seeing? And how are we tackling those to make changes? And then what is that impact? So a few of those things in August, not only we'll be talking about some of the changes in our practice and our attendance campaign, or what does this behavior matrix look like and what does that mean? It will also be showing how does that connect with what we are seeing with our discipline, maybe what's working and what's not. There's some of these interventions or consequences that come that just are not ringing true with kiddos, right? And is it changing and making an impact? Okay, I missed X number of days unverified, or I'm skipping. Dr. Bealan can attest. There may be consequences out there of a detention, a mental suspension. It's not changing behavior. We've got to figure out what is going to be that right now. It's a lot of work will be going around in this summer, just like it was with our CHAMP and our behavior with our team here and the building, to recommend kind of what does that look like moving forward. But a couple of things I wanted to highlight for the attendance, which would be changes. If you look cosmetically, we started to do track changes. The whole attendance kind of section of the student handbook needed to be hundred percent revamped. So similar things that were in there, but it looks all brand new. So major changes with that were what constitutes an excused versus an unexcused. There was in previous handbook language, especially when you're at your middle school or your high school, depending on if it was by quarter, by semester, X number of attendances were excused. Anything after that wasn't unexcused? Well, should they be that? So there's a lot of dialogue around that. So if, hey, if there's excused reasons that a person needs to be out here, we're going to make sure we're marking those. I think that there are many times that if a parent called in, it was a change. Well, if the parent called in, the parent is excusing the student. The student, the parent absolutely has the right to make that decision to send their child or not. But as a school district and for school code, the district has the right to make the decision. Is that an excused versus an unexcused absence? And why does that matter? Because after so many unexcused absences, things that we've tried to do internally within our district, we can then reach out to our regional office, truancy officers, looking at more globally in the community, what types of support can we tap into? If everything's excused, there's never that step where we can then go to look at those wraparound services and the needs that we need to have out there. So with Ms. Spears and many of our staff that were out in the building, many of our administrators, lots of our assistant principals, coordinators, kind of looking at and really making sure in the handbook, it's very clear, these are excused, these types of things are not going to be excused. That will be a change for our parents, and that will be something that we will need to make sure that we're doing regularly, pushing out, especially at the beginning of the year, what is that change? Why is that change happening? And how does that impact your students moving forward? Another change that happened was we wanted to make sure that we were more clear, because there were some inconsistencies about what was happening with makeup work and the timeline for makeup work. So spelled out at each level, what, how long does a student have? Is it solely on the student to have to figure out what that makeup work is? Or how does the student and the teacher come together? Or you are out? How do we, what, we need to put a plan in because you were gone for X number of days? How are we going to make sure that that work is made up, that we're able to, to be able to look at things? And those are differentiated between kind of our excused and our unexcused. More clear guidance around if a doctor's note is needed, if a student is out for three or more days, they can come back to school, but for it to be excused, it needs to be a doctor's note to excuse why they were out. But we don't want that financial burden, if you will. We know that it's extremely, sometimes hard to get a doctor's appointment. Sometimes it's hard to, you have to pay a regular visit to get, you know, something like that for that. And so there is that option of if I can't go to the doctor, can have them come in to see our nurse and our health services, who can then determine, okay, you know, you've got the fever, you don't have this. Parent, you get to still make the decision if you want to keep your child out. But if there's not the symptoms to keep a student, they're, you know, they have that fever, or they haven't been on fever-reducing medication, that they can come to school. Anything outside of that would be unexcused. So giving us another opportunity where we can help to, excuse me, alleviate that financial burden that the doctor's notice needed. And then some components of what clarifies a family emergency versus a non-emergency. If I call in that I have a flat tire, or I have car problems, is that a family emergency? It might be to that family. For us, we can get a bus out to your student. We can pick up your student that way with transportation. Everybody has that ability to have that ride, even if they've missed the bus. We can circle back through with those, so that wouldn't be a constitute a family emergency. And so spelling those kinds of things out so that everybody knows. The other thing, and I applaud many of our schools who pushed on Facebook recently, the reminder of what the calendar for schools, the school year is next year. And that as we do more of that educating, we try to build our calendar with some of those breaks. You've got that February time. There's a little bit of time in October outside, just your holidays. As you're scheduling vacations, try to schedule those around that time, so that those things are readily and regularly available for parents as they're making those decisions. So a lot of times, we're looking at the decision of the adult, not the student, and how do we support around those? And so not only, so those will be some of the physical changes of language that is in the handbook, really clarifying and specifying those kinds of things. The second piece is we will be pushing out an attendance campaign. So there's a number of us who will be meeting next week to look at, what does that look like? What kind of data are we going to share? How do we share what the impact to a student is? Somebody may say, oh, it's only five days that they're on a vacation in first grade, and then they have two or three illnesses. We know those things happen. But if we have those patterns for kindergarten and first grade and second grade and third grade, not only what does that impact from the academic side, but also what about that social, the social skills? What about that job readiness? Because those things do start to impact. And working with EAB, Attendance Works, all of these variety of organizations that are out there, we've got that data that's national and more. Some other things that we, one of our buildings, Marlowe, have started doing their, kind of little nudge letters. Not only am I going to reach out and share with a parent how many times Jessica's been absent, but what is that in comparison to the majority of, the average student in that building, in that grade? Because sometimes it's like, oh, isn't that what everybody does? Right? No, there's not that many absences. And how does that compare there? So a lot of different things will come through that, that campaign, and it's not going to be a one-and-done deal. It's going to have to be something that's regularly visited, and it's probably not going to all be solved in one year. It's going to be something that will continually happen. But then the other piece is, we've got our letters that we are required by the state to send out at certain intervals. And then we're looking at ten percent. Ten percent of September school year looks very different than when you're getting into April, right? So as those things come through, we don't want it just to be punitive in nature of saying, hey, this is how many absences, you got to get your kiddo to school. It's trying to reach out, we're notifying, what's showing in empathy. We want our students to school. We want them to be able to be engaged in the academic component and the social emotional component. There's all kinds of extracurricular type activities. And so for each, there's eight of us up here, for each person, it might look a little different about what is that root cause of not getting to school. And so how do we tackle that? And getting a group from the school and the home together, as well as the students, try to figure out what is that, so we can intervene appropriately. So a lot of those things are going to be put into play. And in August, we'll have a much better presentation on what does that look like for this campaign and those support services as we move through. I would love to commend Mrs. Spears and that team in working on really, this year going through, trying to figure out what do those teams look like? Every school, all good intentions, but they might look a little differently about how do they pull? How regularly do they pull their data? And then what do we do with that? Who should be around that table? Looking at how do we code? Because we've noticed that the way certain things have been coded, it might be your student who has late arrival or early release, and that's part of their, we need to code that a little bit differently. It's not that they're not in, they're not skipping. It's part of what does their day look like? There's a variety of different pieces that we need to get a handle on. We'll be working very closely, lots of questions have come up, but very closely with the high school team on. Right now, we've got if, after X number of tardies or unverified absences, we really don't have anything unverified, right? It's going to be excused or it's unexcused. But we do have a lot of unverified because somebody's not calling them in or not responding to our calls. And so we can work on that communication. But if they are unverified, maybe the parent didn't know they weren't going to math class. We have in here currently, what does that breakdown look like? After the first, it's a warning. After the second one, it's a lunch detention, and that keeps going up and up and up. But Dr. Bealan, you're going to, I agree with me, right? Like, that's not working for our kiddos right now, for a number of them. For some of them, yes. And so what are we going to do? And so that's some of the summer work that our teams will be looking at, to be able to, how do we tackle that? And then how do we stay on top of that throughout the school year? We've got some beautiful team makeup, when I think about the pods that are done at the high school. You've got that wraparound service. You've got deans, you've got counselors, you've got social workers who are all there. And so part of that is, what do those pod meetings look like? And how do we talk about students? Not just from an academic lens, but from that attendance lens or that behavioral lens as well. So that's kind of a nutshell of the attendance. Before going to behavior, some of the other changes that'll be in the handbook specifically. Any questions about the attendance, kind of makeup in that handbook?
I just, I wanted to say, I mean, first of all, really proud of the work that's been done. And very appreciative of our PTAC committee, which is parents and teachers getting together over the course of the school year. And I was involved with it. I think the one thing that, and I'm glad to see that there's a campaign going on, because I think that's going to be essential to get that word out, not just to parents and students, but to the staff as well. That there's truly support here from the district office, from the board, to the schools and the staff, that we need this consistency, we need this to be predictable, we need it to be consistent, so that a child that comes in in kindergarten and grows through the district, through high school, understands attendance at elementary, middle, and high school looks the same. And that it's the same expectations. And whether it's done at Marlowe or Heinemann, or it's done at Conley versus McCavens, it's the same, and everybody can agree on that. And I think the plans that have been put into place, like with cell phones and the consistency there, it's created some predictability with parents understanding that this is the way it's done in the district. And right now, things are interpreted very differently. So part of the PTAC was getting together and understanding, how do we do things consistently and make it more repeatable? So I'm really proud about that. But I do want to make sure that part of our campaign is pushing it out to the staff that we're here to support them.
Yes.
And we support you as the superintendents, supporting our schools, and supporting these deans and these other wraparound groups, to make sure that they understand that we want this information. And it's very likely that the data might get worse before it gets better. And that's okay, because that's how we learn from some of this. And I think that a couple of things that I want to make sure that we point out in the campaign is that with extracurriculars, whether that's activities or sports, it's not just educating the parents and the athletes or the participants, but we need to make sure that our A.D. and our system A.D. is aware of this, that our coaches and our activity sponsors are aware of this, because that is a huge group of students that come to school because they have that culture that they want to be part of. And part of that culture is coming to form being a good student. You're a student athlete, you're a student theater person, you're a student editor on a newspaper. That student part has to come first before there's something else. So I want to make sure that our campaign includes some of that. And then I just want to make sure too, that as a district, if we're encouraging parents and students to follow the student handbook, that has to be included for the district as well.
Sure.
You know, we can't have a school go out and unilaterally decide, I want to change how we are going to look at truancy, because that's going to make it easier for them, and it's going to allow more students to potentially move up to the next grade. We have to understand that we have to be held accountable to that student handbook as well. If we're the ones that are, if we're putting our names on this handbook, we have to say that we're going to be responsible for making sure it's enforced as well.
And there were a number of people who were involved in regular meetings, kind of looking at the coding and the reasons and all of those things, that just like we did for behavior, it'll be, look a little different than the CHAMP. But we spent a lot of time on educating all of the educators to understand and see where those levels of support were, so that they knew that they had the support from the next person to be able to issue this or do that. And again, you bring up a great point, that sometimes it gets a little worse because of the way that we're reporting. And I think that's definitely one of the things that the Learning and Innovation Team and Mrs. Spears noticed, that it was, part of it was once you get in, because you have to really understand it. And the work that she did this year was amazing to be able to get to that. And then we are able to kind of identify, okay, hey, we've got to start with a clean slate here, and we know that it's going to take some time. I don't have all of that because we're waiting to do all of our end-of-the-year reports. We probably won't be hitting our mark on the KPI this year, and it's okay, because I'm extremely proud of the work that's happened there, because we really had to understand it. We also need to take from, and again, it's just one school that's saying that there weren't others, you know, looking at, one that stood out to me was, we saw a nice decrease over at Martin. So how do we learn from the team of what were you doing? What were those successes? Because then we want to be able to try to have that ripple effect. Because I think everybody, all good intentions, and everybody's trying. But that's that consistency piece that we were looking at, where the behavioral component too. So again, it was fantastic work by that team to be able to see that roll out. We now need the other side of the team, which is the home side, and we all need to work together to do what's best for our kiddos.
And the campaign, I think, is going to be essential. I love, I think it's Conley that has been pushing out on social media, hey, here's the calendar so parents can start to get that out. I think we have to do that for the entire district. I think every school needs to do it. Every teacher, when they get those class lists, needs to do it. I think we need to check every social media, whether it's TikTok or what, I don't do TikTok, but whatever it is to relate to people that use social media, to make sure that we're getting that information out, because I think that's going to be essential. And I think that, you know, when we look at something maybe getting worse before it gets better, I think we understand that, and it's not going to be a failure on our part. If we don't hit the KPI and we're learning from it, it's fine. We say that we're the destination district. And I think that this attendance issue is something that's throughout our country. We're not the only school that struggles with this. But I really think the work that we have done here can really make us be leaders in understanding what's the problem? How do we fix it? What are the setbacks that we've had? This is our opportunity to really show This is our opportunity to really showcase what District 158 can do, and we can all stand behind, getting your kids in school is going to better themselves, better their grades, and better our kids for the community.
All right, moving on to the...
Before you go, no, I did have a question. So you mentioned nurses doing diagnoses?
No, so we have guidelines for when to keep your children home. So say they have strep throat, they can come in after being on medication for 24 hours, you know, da, da, da. If it's a fever of this range or higher, you need to keep your child home without, for over, for 24 hours without fever reducing. And so maybe child's been out for five or six days, we'll call, say what's going on. At this point, for it to be excused, you'd need a doctor, so, or come on in. They're not going to diagnose and say, oh, this is what, you know, your child has. But it could be, yes, this is, they still have a fever of 103, whatever. We're not requiring this, just giving another option to parents that they wanted to be able to do that without having that done.
Okay, that helps. Because I was concerned that this becomes an alternative now, and we're serving a different mission in doing so.
Correct.
And crossing a line that maybe we shouldn't. That's, that would be, that's how it sounded the first time around. So I appreciate the clarity.
No, thank you for the clarity on that. And that would come out on an individual basis. It wouldn't just be, today, I don't want to go to the doctor, I'm coming to see the nurse. So maybe we have a student that there are many medical absences, and that would be that team that would sit around, meeting with the parent and the student. At this point, the nurse would come in, they would come up with a plan where this could be part of a plan. So it would be on that individual or small number of group basis, not just poop it to the world. Does that make sense?
No, the clarity, because my next thought was, okay, we need to hire more nurses, because there's people that are coming in there as an alternative to seeing a doctor.
And you just brought a very good example of how we need to be very clear and concise in our messaging with that. So perfect, thank you for that. And there will be things that, as we look at, that we want the lens from parents. I know many of you, there are parents and the district, or our parents, and looking at that lens, we know what we're trying to say, but sometimes it's, hey, tweaking this order, that work, give that from that parent lens. So absolutely welcome all of those suggestions as well.
Thank you.
I could just add, and I promise to be quick, just a couple of things. We're talking a lot about the rules and enforcing the rules and everything like that. We cannot forget so why.
The why, yes.
And the why is, it's in class, learn better and behave better. So data supports that, and I think in a future meeting, you're going to bring out some of that data, because at an individual, like district level, we're actually, you can actually show that. You can look at SAP scores, next year we'll look at ACC scores. But SAP scores, you track it against chronic absenteeism. Schools that have lower chronic absenteeism have better scores. Not surprising, it's intuitive, but the bottom line is, if we want our kids to perform better, we need to get them into school. We have to do our part as the district to help drive that.
And looking at the student discipline component of that, some changes that will be in the handbook, is looking under that section, the School Code of Conduct, which is mainly around the behavioral part, is verbiage expressed at the very beginning of that, and I'm going to read that part. In order to support our students, parents, staff members, and the school community, we want to take the opportunity to review practices and expectations related to student conduct, including behavioral, social emotional support, behavioral interventions, and discipline. All those pieces need to be identified in our handbook. Code of Conduct is a multi-layered system that we will work with by all stakeholders across all school and home settings, to help our students with their social emotional, as well as academic needs. We want to create an environment where all stakeholders are aware of, are aware and are actively engaged in their roles and responsibilities. So again, clearly identifying as the student, here's your roles and responsibilities. You're doing that, we at the district will do this, and as parents, we need this from you. And then there were belief statements that were worked through with our administrative group last summer. And then they were brought to the PTAC, and then they were brought to a larger number of staff members here, about what do, what do we believe about in District 158 about behavior management? And what does that look like? Because that then helps drive our levels of intervention and support, along with consequences. And the big major change, we put in here in this section too, sorry, the, a review of what MTSS is, that multi-level systems of support. It has a separate section in the handbook, but also wanting to pull up a summary or an overview in our Student Code of Conduct section, because as much as we have levels of layer of support for students around academic needs, we need those for behavioral needs as well. And so what does that, that is all encompassing there. And then language around, because I think there's some confusion, not probably amongst many stakeholders, probably people in all of our stakeholder groups, what is restorative practices? Restorative practices are not intended to remove accountability for students. Students who have broken school rules or harmed other school community members are still held accountable for their actions and may receive traditional consequences alongside restorative solutions or in conjunction with restorative practices. Right, there's that component where, yes, we have expectations, and you need to be held to those. And if not, there are consequences or a response that might need to be had there. Well, depending on age, the response or the intervention that we do might look a little bit differently for a thirdner versus an 11th grader doing the same action, depending on what that is. And so there's a beautiful matrix that PTAC looked at, many, many people in the district looked at. And again, under that data and MTSS and all of that role, Mrs. Spears kind of took a vision that we had at the beginning of the year of looking at, and then making it make sense for our district. Many different versions probably. And the first was, what are incidences, and how do we clearly define them? And this was interesting, because as you ask multiple people, what do you think around, I guess that's not the one I'm going to look at, conflict, bullying, let's see, harassment, insubordination, depending on the level, we need to clearly define what is that definition, so we know what we're referring to. And again, multiple people could define it differently, depending on who they are and what they're thinking about. But we need to start somewhere with, here's a consistent definition, so that if a report goes home, parent knows, why are you using this word, and what does that mean? Then what does that definition, it's clearly defined. Right now, we have levels in there. We're twanging around, does it matter what the level is? Probably not, because it really is, TESSA's done this, and here's how we are going to respond. What are our interventions, and what are our consequences? And so alongside that matrix, you've got, what is the behavior code? That's how we're going to put it into our system. What are our improvement types in our definitions? And then right now, there are possible potential responses. You bring up some changes that might be happening that come down the road, and we would update our matrix if we needed to do so there. And the reason that it's potential responses is, we know that, we need to look at, we need to have a consistent approach to doing it. But if there is a reason that maybe my response or my intervention looks a little different than Dr. McCrindles, it might be because of something that's in a 504, an IEP, something, like, he might age, right? There's still an intervention, but what our intervention might look like, that's why it's potential responses. Some of our staff asked the question of, well, but this is great, but how do we get that consistency? And sometimes we hear, well, this happened at TESSIC, but we hear over here, well, let's not always believe what we hear over here, right? There's different reasons or different levels of that. But regularly, that committee got together where we may pull and look at the data. PTAC also looked at it. But if we're seeing a higher number of something in one building versus the other, there would be questions that would be had to kind of understand. This is a learning curve as well, when we're working with students and wanting to do all the best intentions of that, okay, that, I can definitely understand that, but we may need to make sure that that consequence was a little bit, you know, there should have been an out-of-school suspension or X number of days, or vice versa, going the other way. Again, to try, we collaborate and calibrate on writing or different things with rubrics. We need to have those, and those are those data meetings that different levels have on a regular basis to be able to help calibrate. Because we were seeing some inconsistencies on some of the components. Again, all good intentions, but we want to make sure that as we're blending together, we're getting those consistent approaches, and making sure that everybody has access to the same intervention across our buildings. And so again, this is great work that a lot of work went, so students and families understood expectations through our champs and whatnot. This now will help to make sure, as I'm looking down, if I'm the person dealing with an incident or infraction, I'm here to be able to look, okay, it's here, this is going to fit here. So the two of us aren't calling something different and then issuing potential different responses. And so again, this is going to just, especially with our staff, making sure we're getting that out, to have some understanding, hey, this is a teacher managed, these are the things that you can do, this is when it's important to kick it up to the administration. And then again, that support, understanding that we do support the decisions that need be had around discipline and consequences there. So that matrix is something that probably will be tweaked over time, you know, as we've got that starting point and to go from there. This is one, a great example of, a team worked all year long. I'm really refining that, brought it to the final PTAC meeting. And everybody in that room, right, was like, this is, this is great, this is to be able to go ahead. Because in the past, we had not a lot of changes in certain areas, the consequences are still there. But over here in the handbook, you have the levels. Then maybe two pages later, here are the types of consequences. This is compiling it all together in one central location, along with, I think that it was important to highlight in the Student Code of Conduct area, what are our beliefs as a district around behavior? What is that MTSS approach? And then trying to clarify some Ms. Domers out there of restorative practices, and what does that mean? I think some of the pieces that we'll continue to look at and move forward on is how do we implement this when we're working with students that maybe have in their IEP or a 504, that they may have an alternate plan? We don't have a large number of students that have that alternate plan, and what does that mean? And so working very, very closely, it shouldn't just be, these individuals are dealing with it. If we're looking at a student in the Genon population versus that, we all need to work together and collaborate with one another. So those will be some pieces too, that we will bring forward with some policy and understanding in PTAC for next school year, because definitely we need to get the core here, and then be able to look at, how do we utilize that for students who maybe do need something a little bit different as indicated in their IEP. Any questions about the behavior piece? I think it is that matrix, that is the major change. Again, Mrs. Spears, thank you to you and your team for both of these. That was a...
That was a very big time.
So. Some other recommended revisions due to changes in either policy or law, changing of sex offender, violence offender notification to sex offender, it's all encompassing, it's the name change per what's pushed out to us via law, legal name change. Additions of some breakfast item language in the elementary handbook, we will be pushing that out at the elementary level, offering that. Some additions to our visitor guideline, kind of talking about, again, this was a policy change, any person engaged in prohibited conduct may be ejected or denied admission to school property, could be an extracurricular activity, whatnot, by law, so we're putting that clarification in there. There was some clarity provided, we had a few instances this school year where the bus stop, the five minutes before or after, and what does that mean? So Dr. Zare and Mrs. Boston worked with Mrs. Cooper to kind of streamline and clarify that language and the why of what does that look like? Because again, we had some, probably more than we needed. Questions on that, so it's told us, we needed to clarify that language. And then there were, this was a change for policy, which is linked to school code or state law, in the areas of equal educational opportunities, bullying, harassment, conduct motivated by prohibited discrimination. Nope, those are the three areas. And it was looking at language and group in, so equal educational, co-curricular, and extracurricular opportunities shall be available for all students without regard to. And so there were some, it looks like there were more changes, with track changes than not, but what Mrs. Wood did was kind of mirror the list order that was in press, and so there were more changes with that. So an addition was the academic status. That was not in there previously. New language for national origin, previously it was nationality. Let's see, there was status of homeless prior to, new wording in verbiage is homelessness. So a lot of change just around the wording with that. It was gender identity before, gender-related identity, new language there, marital status was in there, a potential marital status, some changes with language. That's going to be in all four of those areas there. And then a new section added with information about support under the teen dating violence prohibited section. The undesignated asthma medication, we're taking the language that a few meetings ago was policy change, and adding that in. And then I did not list all the basic date changes, name changes, all, here's the testing window for this or that, we'll get that, it'll all be beautified in the handbook when we bring that forward at the regular. And again, you'll have all of those separate handbooks, but we'll take all of this and embed it in there. So when you're voting, you're voting on that actual handbook. If something were to change between now and then, whether it's with a policy change, well, we probably have to bring that through for policy. We know we're waiting on some things with Title IX still. If some of those tweaks or any guidance, probably not right away, that we would get out of that Senate bill, or we would bring those forward and make sure that we update and have some changes there. Any questions on any of those?
I guess I'll just say, we applaud all the work that's come into this. This is a fresh look at the handbook, and there's a lot of changes here, and it's all moving in the right direction.
A lot of work to those, those individuals out there in the land, they're sitting there, they don't want to be called out. A lot of our building staff and our district office staff have worked on it. I appreciate their hard work. So, yep.
If you would move that, or any other comments from anybody in the committee for the board? All right, with that, I will hand it over to Ms. Murray for the committee.
All righty. We've got Mrs. Barr, going to give us an update. Portman?
Happy to. Good evening, Laura. So I just wanted to give everybody a brief update in your memo. You'll see that we have made a decision about our new mask notifications provider. We decided to go with the product that Power School has offered to us, self-communicate, formerly School Messenger. So there are a number of reasons for that. One thing was cost, so they were able to provide a competitive pricing with Swift Reach. The other thing is, Power School is a known entity to us. We have a relationship with them, and we know their rep, and so there's some, there's knowns around that. Also, this platform will look, well, maybe not look, but will be housed within Power School, just like Swift Reach is now. So we'll be familiar in how you go about accessing it to our schools and to those of us here who use it. So we're excited to get that going. We have a kickoff call next week with the technology folks here, and then with the Power School team there to get things going. As you know, the deadline that we were originally given was June 30th. And then an interesting email came out this week that said, from Power School, that they were going to extend the use of Swift Reach until September 1st. And so we don't know what that means for us specifically, and so I have an email out to a rep to confirm what that's all about. It was a mass email, again, just like we got the news the first time. So it's kind of unclear when you, depending on your status, you know, but we entered a contract with them now. So we're going to move things along, because I think that's in our best interest to try to get everybody training and get this going. But just wanted you guys to kind of be aware of, that we did make a decision, that we're moving forward, and kind of why we decided to do what we did. This is a one-year, one-year contract, so we can... This is a one-year, one-year contract, so we can see how that can go before we take it any further. Any questions?
It's more of a commentary. That seems like a very weird email to send, because if there's any kind of transition needs to be done, and you're going to do it anyway because their support ends in September, you're not going to want to do that transition, and the school year starts at the end of August. Unless they did it with purpose to overlap something, something else, it just seems like a very odd email to send.
Agreed.
It's just an observation. No relevance whatsoever.
We're heartedly agree with you. Yep, I agree. But hopefully, we'll get a little more, I think we just need to do what's up for our, for our district, and that is just to allow, to allow what we're doing. And then, the website, we are right, right in the midst of it all, and it's exciting. Our, our content is being migrated over for us. I'm in the process of learning the new system. My assistant, Kimmy, is going to be doing the same, and also mapping out what we want the new site to look like. So, there will be some, some changes organizationally that I think makes sense, just given what we've learned from our parents, what's important to them, making sure that we have those areas that are prevalent and that our navigation is as possible. But encouraged by what I'm learning, I think that it is a, it's a, it's a well-done system that's well-supported. We have multiple layers of support with this thing, and I think that's, that's really important for a number of reasons. So, still looking at the August launch for the website, and, you know, we'll just ensure that the most important information is available to our parents that relates to back-to-school. It doesn't mean every single page is going to be flushed out by them, because that, that would be a very lofty goal, but I think the important part is that we, that we get it out there, and we make the switch, and we make sure that the most important information that our parents need is front and center.
Those pages that aren't updated, updated, they'll still be able to see, they would notice the backend, so they'll still be available, but it just wouldn't be on the new platform yet.
Well, no, I think that all of it, what I mean to my final site is that we're going to want to launch everything at one time, but it might be a matter of saying, some of these pages are under construction, right? Because we have not gotten to designing them yet or whatever. I'm looking at this as an opportunity to, you know, like, open your closet and look at things. So, every single thing, we're doing some house cleaning, because that is a great time to do it, and so I want to get it the right way and all of that. So, working as fast as we can, we just have to prioritize the back-to-school and making sure that we have all the information that we need, and our parents have what they need and have access to the portal, things like that. Any questions on the website?
We're not changing the address, correct?
The address will change, but that, again, is just a communication thing that we have to let everybody know that.
So, it won't be a.com. They want to be a.org?
It, it will not be exactly that, because we have a different server now. So, yeah, it will, it will change, but we'll make sure that.
That got a little messy, I think, last time when they.
But if we're going to own the same URLs or the domain, then we can mirror it and push people who happen to just, you know, redirect them back to that, right?
Yeah, that's what we did last time.
It'll just, yeah, it'll just be a matter of communicating, communicating.
And I think that's sort of the thing, like, if they went to the others, it's still going to be live somewhere, it'll just redirect them.
Oh, I see what you're talking about. Yeah.
Yes.
We'll make sure that this is seamless as possible for, for parents. I think it'll be a really positive change. Excited about it. And then, the other, just a quick update in the writer's read together, we're picking it up on Monday, so super excited about that. We've got our community, got readers involved, it's lovely, we'll pick us up on Monday, so that's going to be the next few Mondays in June and in July, 1:00 at the Hathi Library. So, looking forward to having your elementary. Anything else remaining from the report? I know there's some information on volunteers, that KPI, which was great June. We thank Eileen Delhanti for a lot of her work in here on that, and really trying to engage the community and finding new ways to do that, and also just ensuring that we are reporting with fidelity so that we're, we're capturing that information as we do have engagement, and just how engagement can look different than traditional volunteering things we've done in the past, there's new ways to engage with our, our community that we're looking at.
I mean, it's worth noting, the volunteer side, you did double the KPI, right?
Yeah.
We grew them by 20%. We got a lot more volunteers, which is.
Absolutely.
Highlighting the teams that were working more.
And like to thank Eileen Delhanti, she really deserves a lot of credit on that. She's got a lot of those relationships, and then, you know, she sits in the middle there, making sure that we can find, you know, once we have those people who, who want to engage, putting them in the right spot to be able to do that. A lot of coordination on her.
She is one of the more amazing assets of the district.
Yeah, she really, yeah. Yeah.
Thanks for all, for all your hard work. I know that's not been easy, but you know, it's.
It'll be great, though.
All right, I don't have anything further. Damon, do you have anything?
Nope.
All right, with that, we'll move on to number 13, Board of Education, which we'll just jump right into 13-1, renewal for IAFB.
Yeah, no, that is, the next two are just annual renewal memberships to IAFB. I don't know, that's just, definitely, I'd recommend that we continue there, the things that we are able to get from IAFB is great throughout the year, and the thing will be good. Any questions on that? Well, we'll start with those.
One for me. IAFB's been actually very, very helpful. Move on to that one.
Any questions on Luda?
All right, number 13-3, some minutes here, I've been prepared for you, any comments on the minutes? I'm opting that, so we'll move that forward. And then, moving to number 14, any public comments? I don't see anything there. Would you like to make any? All right, so with that, we move to 15, which is closed session, we're moving to closed session at, making motion to move into closed session at 8:13 PM, as it's down in the agenda for the topic of research.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Corbin. Now, can I have a little call?
Mr. Cray? Mr. Bittman?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley?
That will jump there.
This will be.
Oh, yeah.
You better not.
No, no, I get.
You're a good one. I'm going to.
This is a fine call, you know.
You know, I'm left, I'm left.
All right, we'll exit closed session. This is a public-- are we going to take a roll call again? We do, right?
Yeah.
So we resume the public session at 8:52 PM. Can I have a roll call?
Mr. Craddy. Mr. Business.
Here.
Mr. Troy.
Here.
Mr. Quagiano.
Here.
Mrs. Murray.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Mrs. Wiley.
Here.
All right, with that, we resume the public session and I will make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 8:53 PM.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Wiley. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting is adjourned.
Right.